Good evening.
Oh.
There we go. And welcome to a meeting of the Kennebunkport Planning Board. My name is George Lickety. I am your temporary chairperson for the evening, so bear with me. I'm gonna be making it up as I go along. I'm gonna check the very full agenda tonight. I'm gonna check attendance. We have two board members in addition to myself, so we have a quorum. And first order, oh, if, it's a thing that we always read off about if you wanna watch remotely, it's on Zoom. But you would probably already know that because you'd be watching on Zoom. So if you're watching on Zoom, welcome as well.
Do we have any in attendance in, on Zoom?
We have three.
Oh, there you go. They found their way. And first order of business is the minutes. Everybody okay with the minutes? Make your motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
Well, one favor. Minutes are done. All right. So first item on the agenda is item two five zero two zero three, three seventy Mills Road. And it's a major revision to a previously approved subdivision. It's the first time we've looked, no, no, we've seen this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I'm the case manager.
Gathering our information, yeah.
If you would like to present.
I'm representing Gabby Jacob, who's the landowner. And, yeah, we're just gonna go through the questions that were presented to me from the planning board.
Okay.
I think that's what we're doing today.
That sounds good. That's a good approach.
Yeah? Okay.
I'll, I'll bring those up.
Oh, great.
I'll try this at home, folks. Okay, three seventy Mills Road, that's not three seventy Mills Road, three seventy Mills Road, right, yeah, we had a bunch of comments outstanding on that. Back in March. So ownership information, the deed.
I provided the deed to all of you.
You have, and that's terrific. Thank you. And site plan.
Also.
Foundry survey.
Yeah, so we changed the site plan a bit to accommodate the fifteen percent space. And also in order to hopefully not have to put in an extra driveway in order for the homeowner to get to our house. So that was in the original plan, but we're hoping to avoid that because of environmental sort of impact as well as economic.
So the plan would be a shared driveway?
It would. And it's already a shared driveway at this point. But now it would be three parties accessing the same driveway. And so the driveway would be widened by about fifteen feet, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yep, I think so, just about.
And that involves filling some wetland.
Sorry?
That involves filling, no, I'm thinking.
No, it actually would avoid filling the wetland.
Avoid filling the wetland.
Yes.
You're using the pre-existing driveway to the back of the house, the back house.
Yes, that's what we're hoping for.
And homeowners association, HOA.
There is none in place, but we are planning to put together a driveway sort of agreement, like a shared access agreement. With Jamie and, Jamie Houts is the other homeowner, and then Gabby, and then the new owner of the new property. So it'd be like, just a very simple, it's basically about twelve feet of shared, is it twelve, fourteen feet?
Very few.
Very few feet. So it's a tiny amount of driveway that would be shared by the three people.
Okay.
But there would be the two that had a bit more of an extent. That would be shared, correct?
Yes.
So the three was just right up, literally on the road.
Mm-hmm.
And then until.
And then Gabby, yes, exactly. Gabby would be sharing the driveway with the.
The new official.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any questions on that, Mike?
Uh, no, I was just, there was a question about the wetlands, and I was trying to remember it.
Well, that, we're avoiding the wetland, filling in any wetlands at all.
By sharing the driveway?
By sharing the driveway, yeah.
And I'm looking at my updated memo, and I did, I neglected to take out the piece about filling in the wetlands, but that isn't an issue that we're anticipating.
Yeah, but there was a question about the data from, of the wetlands being from twenty twenty ten, or two thousand and ten?
Two thousand and eleven.
And has there been any change since?
No, there, there really hasn't, and the surveyors were out there recently. So the wetland delineation is as it stands.
And that was per, what is it, lower, lower village?
Yeah, lower village survey, mm-hmm.
And I guess the other comment that caught me, and I, I think it was the one, was the one from the fire chief new?
Uh, no, that was from last time, and so we, we left, I left it in there in the memo as a recommended condition for planning board approval, but the applicant did state that there would be, the onus would be on the new owner to maintain that fire pond. So we left it in that comment from the fire chief as a recommended condition, but it's not a new comment.
And it will be included in the purchase and sale agreement.
And it would use the existing pond?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And it is well water, yes?
Yes.
And the, the new application, or the new site plan does include potential well locations.
And then I guess there is comment number nine, Nadia. I'm assuming that no road plan has been provided. Is this the updated where it's gonna be, or the construction of the road?
Uh, the construction of the road. We haven't received a construction plan for the road, but it's, I mean, I think that's kind of up to the board. If you guys are comfortable with not receiving a construction plan before approval. But it is, it's just something I wanted to note so that you were aware of.
And, yeah, I, I did wonder about that because it's really hard to know exactly, you know, because depending on the building and, you know, the landscaping, it really depends on the new owner as far as what that would look like.
What the road itself would look like?
No, the driveway, I'm talking about the driveway.
So, so I'm talking about the shared portion of the road?
Oh, I see. Okay, so she's planning to hire a local contractor who's well-known and does great work. I don't know, I should.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, so it's just, you know, something to note to the board, but if you're comfortable with it as a condition, that, you know, the code officer would.
Put it in as a condition versus a condition of approval, put it as a condition of the permit, the finding of facts, is that?
Right, so for that little small portion of the road, it has to have a sixteen inches of thick after compaction. Driveway doesn't have those, those standard requirements. Uh, and there's also a travel way width and a grade width. Um, so that, as long as, you know, there, the contractor knows that it has to meet those specifications, that's fine.
With that, is that something that goes into permission or as part of code enforcement after the fact? If it was noted in the finding of facts, and then that would be enough for code enforcement?
That, that would be enough. We can work with you on that. Usually, like, in, as part of the application, they would show you a cross-section of that road portion and showing that it's gonna be sixteen inches thick after compaction, and it's gonna meet your spec requirements. We just didn't see that in their application.
So part of the differentiation is this is not a road, it is a driveway.
It is a road.
Currently, it's a driveway.
It's currently a driveway.
It needs to become a, like a fifteen-foot road.
It needs to become a road.
Yep.
And meet those specs.
Yep.
Yes. All fifteen feet of it need to meet those specs.
It's gonna be probably the shortest road.
Wow, that's pretty exciting.
And not a town road.
I guess my question is, can that be handled by verbiage, or do I need an actual engineering drawing for that?
As long as they agree that that's the stated purpose, that they're gonna stay within the, this town specs, that's fine. Uh, normally, we do have an illustration. It's usually engineered, but I think in this case, it's a simple subdivision. And it's for residents to divide their lot.
I trust code enforcement.
Okay.
So verbiage is, okay, okay.
Verbiage is fine with me. Uh, and, uh, the wetland, there's a stream, has that been identified?
It's not a stream.
It's not a stream?
It's definitely not a stream.
Okay.
Do you wanna hear, yeah, the definition of a stream?
No, that's fine. It's not a stream.
It doesn't meet that at all. It's, it's a drainage swale, so.
Drainage swale.
And that was all farmland at one point, so there's a lot of drainage swales everywhere. It's coming from like a swampy area in the back, and it's definitely not a stream.
There are several waivers that are recommended in the documentation for mostly, like, the stormwater management and runoff and all that sort of thing. I've, given the, the scale and scope of this, I'm fine with waivers on that. What does rest of board think?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I do have a question about the, the proposed septic design here. It's kind of above ground to some extent, right?
Well.
It, it, effectively, you'll mound it.
We will have to. I was there when he did the test fit, and he explained to me what would happen. So it's beneath the, where the driveway is now, so it won't be like a, a large mound, it'll be a very small mound.
Okay.
So it's kind of like in a, in a little, little bit of a hollow.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
But this drawing kind of has the proposed driveway going over that mound. Is that feasible?
It is. I mean, we can go around it, or we could also, the other option is to put the driveway in on the other side of that, which is what I think would be personally, and would make more sense.
In which case, the road's gonna be thirty feet, or whatever. Yeah, okay.
But, I mean, either way, it can, it could work, I think.
I remember in one of the earlier discussions on a project we had, it is possible to engineer to drive over the leach field. But it requires special engineering.
Well, this isn't even so much driving over specifically the, the apparatus as it is the grading to bring it back.
Yeah, I don't think, the, the driveway wouldn't go over the actual.
Yeah. Well, it's not shown here, that, that way, yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I thought there was one about setback, or am I?
The, my, my only note there was that the, um, the proposed building envelope is within the fifty-foot buffer that's required of a subdivision. I think that, I would say that that's a waivable. What do you think, Yol?
Which one?
The, um, it is preservation of natural or historic features. Uh, we require a fifty-foot buffer, so.
Yeah, so if that's the case, it'd be similar to what you had for the, um, the housing.
Development, okay.
Trees, you're not taking any big trees out?
No.
Nope.
Uh-uh.
Mostly drives already, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty. It's not a huge change to the property.
So I think where at this point it's finding complete.
I think it's complete. We've had a couple of things that are noted. Staff, think of anything else we've left out.
I had, there you go. I was just gonna say, I had no major concerns, I was.
Did they discuss the flag lot concerns?
Oh.
I think we did last time.
I think that, I think they might have discussed it last meeting, too. My only other outstanding note was that you do have a prohibition on flag lots, which, um, the ordinance states is basically a prohibition on creating odd-shaped lots for the purposes of meeting net residential area calculations. So it's something for the board to consider. I, I would note that the, the driveway and the house are already existing and aren't being changed, so usually our concern would be, you know, a long driveway being created, but it does already exist.
We had talked about that in this meeting in March.
Does that require a waiver?
I don't think it requires a waiver. It's more of a notion.
I think it's kind of a notion.
You know it when you see it. Someone comes in, they've just got four stripes on the lot. No, you can't do that. I've got no other concerns, guys.
Neither do I.
What do you think?
Make a motion to find the application complete.
Uh, I'll second the motion.
Hi. All right, so application is complete.
And public, public hearing, July second?
July second, public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
See you then.
Um, did you, housekeeping-wise, did you all make motions on the waivers?
No, we did not.
Okay.
But we discussed several.
Do you want me to list them, and then you can just make a simple motion?
I think so. That'd be very helpful, Galen. There's open space.
Um, the planning board will be requesting a waiver for the high-intensity soil survey requirement. Um, the, uh, location is outside the floodplain, which is a waiver request. Uh, hydrogeologic assessment is being waived by the board. Um, the, uh, proposed acreage vegetation survey has been waived since no development is occurring in that area. The location of any open space to be preserved is being waived as it is a revision of the subdivision. The vehicular traffic, the generation rates has been waived, given the scope of the project. The stormwater management plan is being waived, given the scope of the project. Erosion sedimentation plan submission is being waived, as there's no major improvements taking place in the lot. Um, they have waived documentation to satisfy the requirements of financial and technical capacity, since this is going to be a, a sold lot to someone else. They have waived the soil erosion under four fifteen dash eleven point four. There is a waiver, uh, for four fifteen dash eleven point ten, which is the financial and te- technical capacity. And four fifteen dash twelve point seven, which is the lots for the flag lots.
Wait, did you get four fifteen, eleven, sixteen?
Oh, four fifteen, uh, four fifteen, eleven fifteen, and four fifteen, eleven sixteen.
Yeah.
Which is your stormwater and your open space requirements.
Okay. A whole lot of waivers.
Make a motion to accept those waivers.
I think it's a damn good idea.
Hold a second?
Yes.
Agree.
Thank you, Galen.
Yep.
I guess if I said we have to.
All right.
Who, who, yeah, that's right. Who is the, uh?
I am the case manager. List is on here. I don't recall that, but I'll take it as written.
A weak moment.
Uh, which brings us to item two five zero six zero one thirty-five Pier Road. Site plan review, initial review.
Hi, how are you? I'm Julie. I represent the Pier Road, Patrick O'Brien.
Okay.
His daughter is on Zoom right now, from California.
All right. Now, Julie, your last name?
It's Campell.
Campell, thank you.
From Oceanside Management.
All right, thanks. Would you like to describe the project?
Chris is here with me. He's the contractor. He sent in a packet already.
Yep.
I believe it's one of you that's been emailing back.
Yep.
So usually, the applicant just does a quick, short narrative of like, what the project is, and then they'll open up to questions.
Okay.
End of winter twenty twenty-four, there was a pier.
Please introduce yourself.
Chris Dar, Chris Darling, contractor. End of the winter twenty twenty-four, there was a big storm, took the pier, disconnected it, brought it out to sea, and then was nice enough to deposit it back on the land, but sideways and crushed. So they just wanna replace it.
Is that replacing it to the same dimensions?
Same dimensions. It might actually be a little bit shorter than what was originally there.
And there'd be a larger question about the timing, but also, was the original dock up to standards? Railing width, spacing of boards, all that. So you'd just be replacing that?
Yes.
Pretty much.
In, in the same location?
In the same location, sturdier. We actually have on-site, 'cause we got stopped up using ten-inch marine-grade pilings.
Well, okay, so you're replacing the pilings?
Yes.
These are helical?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, the, the, the big question in the room is, this is over a year ago. And generally, uh, projects like that, for something that's been removed by nature, you have to do it within twelve months. So that would require a waiver from the board?
Is it, there was a different sort of wording?
So the, so the background for this is it's a non-conforming dock. It's in a velocity zone.
Oh.
Which, which we don't allow per ordinance. I'm sure that it was built originally before this was a prohibition, but at this point, it is. So it's in velocity zone, elevation twelve. And it has, it's been about a year, and almost a year and six months since, um, the dock was destroyed. And per our ordinance, we, any non-conforming use that's being, like, basically, that's either been removed or destroyed, has, they have twelve months to put the non-conforming use back. Um, if they intend to take longer, they need to ask the planning board for a, they can ask for up to a one-year extension on that timeline.
Is, is that to approval, or is that to actual completion of construction within that one year? And therefore, within two years if it was extended?
I think construction.
Yeah, so normally, you would have to apply for the building permit, and the building permit is good for about two years. So as long as they were starting the process within that year, or they asked for an extension, 'cause they realized, you know, the con- construction season, they can't get a contractor or something. What should have happened is they should have came to you all and said, you know, we understand, you know, we, finances were tough, whatever happened. Um, we just now are getting around to this. Um, we, can you give us an extension for another year? And that's what that provision allows for, some flexibility.
We'd like that.
Were, were there special circumstances?
Yeah, there was, as you all know, what happened to both shores in Maine. Uh, the insurances, the company took a very long time to give the owner money. Uh, contractors, plumbers, electricians were hard to get. We finished the job just in time for the renters to get there, just to complete the two cottages that existed there. So I think there was a little miscommunication, uh, with Mr. O'Brien, thinking that he could just continue on doing what he did. But again, we were waiting a very long time for the insurances. The insurances actually denied him any money for the dock or several things on the property. So that's what we were waiting for as well, and they denied him, and he didn't appeal anymore. He decided to wait a year, 'cause our renters came in, so we couldn't really build. And now we have renters coming this year, and it's actually, we don't have as many, because the attraction is the dock. People like to fish off it, you know, it's something that's been there the entire time, every year they've come. So he decided to put the money out of pocket into doing the dock, so he can attract more renters that will help him pay his tax bills.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that piece, but the, the challenge for the board is, uh, that there is a, a clock that starts ticking.
Right.
After the destruction of any piece of property. And, I'm, for instance, there was another dock just down the road, Pier Road, uh, that got replaced. And to the consternation of some on the board, it was replaced, uh, as it was, which were, it was, uh, wider than current standards. It was six foot, not four foot. And, uh, also with velocity zones, and, and being in a velocity zone, and as you know, in the wetland, the shoreline ordinances, uh, replacement of that is allowed, but since it's outside of the twelve-month window, uh, that, uh, for the purposes of the board, it's not a, a financial matter. It's a matter of the timing of when the application gets put in, because this in effect is, becomes not a new application, but a, not a replacement, but almost a new application.
Okay.
And, uh, so I, I.
And I guess the way I read it, there has to be some sort of extenuating circumstances and brought forward within the year to the planning board, or at least the code office. And I guess it was a year and a half before we heard anything.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, asking for an extension on your taxes. You have to ask for it. And there, there was no application made to the planning board, uh, or to the town. Trying to think of a similar experience to this, other than personal experience.
Does the replacement dock meet the, the requirements for the width? Or is it the, the old one and therefore the new one, 'cause you're replacing it to the same dimensions?
Yes.
But is it compliant with the width, do we know? With limitations?
I don't know.
What is the compliance of?
Four feet?
Yeah, oh.
Four feet wide with railings, and whatever the standard spacing is for the boards.
Is that four, minimum?
No, that's, that's the, maximum.
Maximum work width?
Yeah.
This is twelve feet by twenty-four. That's what it was there.
Yeah. So, yeah, it, it's one, non-conforming to current standards. And then not even available to be built because of the location in the velocity zone, is my current. So you, you couldn't even, if you had it to, to current design, it couldn't be built because of where it is. Is that right, Nadia?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, so there are people putting docks on the water now, like the neighbor just put one in a couple of years ago. How did they go about it?
So they, I, I was not here a couple of years ago. It's possible that they, um, had a non-con, an existing non-conforming use that they replaced. Um, you know, we have, it, it does happen. People have non-conforming uses that are destroyed, and then they, they replace them within that timeframe, so it's possible that that's what happened. Um, I'd be, you know.
This is one down toward the end of Mills, of, uh.
No, actually, it's next door. And there was actually a substantial, large dock that was put in in front of us, and it took about a year and a half in front of us. I watched them build it with a barge. The la- last year was finished, but it took about a, a good, solid eight months.
Did you look at Google Maps on the property?
It's there to the left.
Sitting there.
Well, I remember there was one, there's been two that we've approved. Both of them were non-conforming. Uh, they were made no more non-conforming and were done within the time period.
And that, that's the key thing, is the ti- is the time period. And that's what the board, I think, had noted. What, whether it's, it's rebuilding a, um, a conforming or non-conforming pier is, uh, secondary to, will the board accept an application that's outside the timeframe? And I'm trying to think of any time we've ever done that.
I don't believe Mr. O'Brien was aware of that timeframe, and I just got brought into this a couple of months ago to get things going and order the special order.
Right.
Pressure-treated stuff that's now sitting on the property.
Yeah, that doesn't, doesn't, doesn't.
Material, but.
I understand, but that doesn't change.
I don't think he was aware of it, and I certainly wasn't.
That doesn't change that, that timing issue, and I'm asking the board, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm unaware of any time when we've had, we've had extensions that we've given, but that's in the process.
Extensions to previous applications.
Yeah, and that, but I, I don't know, I'm unaware in my ti- tenure on the board, giving a.
No, I, I'm unaware of one. Staff? Can't, can't say anything?
No, I'm not.
Process. If, if this, if this application, uh, uh, would, uh, did not go forward, is that something that would go before the zoning board of appeal?
The applicant could appeal the decision to the zoning board of appeals. It wouldn't automatically go.
No.
The, the applicant has to make that appeal, but it is an, it is an avenue that they can go down.
That would be the process.
Yes.
David, you have any experience of this, or you can say no?
No, I don't. I don't have any experiences. I mean, the question, when, when did, when did the application come in?
Couple of weeks ago.
So it's a year and a half.
And when were they, when were you folks aware that you had a timing issue?
Didn't know. The, uh, Patrick O'Brien is an elderly older man. So I think he's back where, um, maybe things were different. So he was just wanting to on-go the process now.
So this is your first really understanding?
You also said that there were other buildings on the property that were destroyed?
So they weren't destroyed. The tide was over them. So when the tide came in, when we had that astronomical.
Yep.
Uh, there's Finback and Humpback is what they're called. They're two cottages on the water, and then there's the pier. Well, they went underwater. Well, Finback halfway, Humpback was completely underwater. And then the dock went out to sea and came back sideways. So it was existing sideways. So I had the dock removed, but we had renters coming, so we couldn't build the dock, because we had renters present. So we did enough for those two properties to get them up and ready to rent.
The, the timing issue is not about the money or the, or the renters.
Right.
It's about the application process.
And we were unaware. There was a miscommunication, I guess.
Was there an application process for the cottages? To do anything with the cott- To do anything with the, did you have to do anything with the cottages?
We just had to fix the inside, it wasn't like a huge.
Come and get anything?
Yeah.
No building, no building permits, no.
Nothing at all.
I can't find a compelling reason.
I think a compelling reason is, is the, the condition, I mean, the severity of the storm.
Exactly.
If we're to find one, I guess.
The tide.
I'm not sure that excuses the missing of the timeframe, but.
I mean, for an application of rebuild of a, of a house someplace, it'd be different. This, this is a, a, a nonconforming dock platform in a, in a velocity zone on the shoreline.
Where you couldn't get permission to build currently?
No. And we, we had, uh, with the dock that was built down at the end of Pier Road, rebuilt after the storm. They rebuilt it to their original specifications, even though the board was not happy with that outcome, we didn't have any choice. Because it was a rebuild.
And no less nonconformous.
And no less nonconforming.
Can I make a suggestion? We really don't know exactly, we probably want to find out a little bit more information about this. Would you want to table it and have?
Could table it and have them.
And have, find out a little bit more and then?
Or if they could give, seeing it's new to you, the requirement, provide us with a narrative of how we got to where we're at. And the reasons for the delay, um to try to give more weight to that argument.
And if you would like, we can ask the town solicitor to give an opinion, if that helps with that section. That way, you know, we're giving them a fair shot that, you know, the ordinance is, you're getting an opinion from the attorney on the ordinance to help with your decision.
So in the near future, if this house was sold, because eventually it will be, the new owner would never be able to build a dock.
Not a chance.
Even with everybody having a dock on the water.
And that's just, call it grandfather historical, with the new building requirements, that would not be allowed.
And, and the reason being is the shoreline zoning, um with the velocity zone, you have a lot of wave action, and you ca- a lot of destruction of those docks occur. It also can divert uh some of the flooding water uh to other areas where it's flooding more areas of, that weren't, not previously, because that structure wasn't there. So there's a reason why that they're, they're not allowed, um but, you know, certainly you can keep the ones that you currently have. It's just unfortunately that the timeline was missed, but I think it would be prudent for the board to, you know, maybe get a legal opinion from the town because of how complex this case is.
Yeah.
Um and the uniqueness of it, that way you have, you know, some guidance, and you're also just not sending them to the ZBA right away. We're, we're getting more clear answers on nonconforming.
Getting from them more detail of the process of how they ended up where they were, be it the insurance and.
Yeah.
And these things, to be able to, a narrative of how we, how their thought process or their process that got to this point.
Right. We waited a long time.
Yeah, and I think you need to kind of think about that and, and, and explain that a little bit more, in more detail.
Right. I'll uh reach out to the family, they'll uh support it better.
So rather than, so, I mean, that's my, I don't have a vote, but that is, like, when I would say, you might want to table it and just find out a little bit more information.
That's a great strategy.
Very good.
And good suggestion.
All right, so do I have to have a motion for two?
A motion to table this application.
All right, I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you.
Table it till.
After we have uh some feedback from the town solicitor on how best to proceed with this?
I would say it's likely that we can have you on the um July second agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks. Wow. All right, brings us to two five zero six zero two nineteen River Road, Cape Arundel Golf Club. Golf Club. And uh stabilizing shoreline.
Yes.
Take it away.
All right, thank you very much, I'm Bill Walsh with Walsh Engineering. I'm here with Lena Toby and Sean Gobin, I'm, Sean's the general manager of Cape Arundel Golf Course. Lena's gonna hand out a couple of things to you, one is gonna be a overall plan of the, of the golf course, and the other one is some information that we're resubmitted today, um that was part of the, the comments that the planning staff gave to us. Nadia, do you mind pulling up that single plan?
Yep, I can do that.
I got golf clubs, golf clubs. Golf courses, yeah.
It's the closest I'll ever get to a golf course.
Is this different from uh what was in the book?
There, um, there was an additional, a supplemental information package submitted earlier today, Bill's gonna talk through that. And then this is just an informational, you're thinking that single page.
Yeah. So we've, we've got, we've got a little bit of a presentation here, I'll try to move through it as quickly as I can for everybody, but um the way we've got a fair amount of work that's happening here at the golf course. We started this project about eighteen months ago, uh working with the golf course and doing a full assessment of their shoreline and the erosion associated with that. They, the, all along the course sees different amounts of erosion, or the, the property adjacent to the course sees different amounts of erosion, and we, the project that you have in front of you is really to address the most severe locations that we have right now. So the golf course itself is an eighteen-hole golf course, it's located at nineteen River Road, just up the street here. It abuts both the Kennybunk River, Goff Mill, which is on the left-hand side, as you look at that, going, going up. You have um River Road that's running sort of left to right. And we have um Bass Cove, we call it, which is down on the, on the bottom right corner of that plan as you look at it. And every one of those sort of larger boxes and descriptions are areas where we're proposing improvements. I'll say shoreline stabilization improvements. And on top of that, there are some other things that are happening, we're doing a invasives removal plan across most of the shoreline, so there's, there's a fair amount of invasives that exist all along the, the edges of the course. And there are going to be native buffer plantings that get put in along the edge of the course as well. So it's a, it's a fairly sizable project in, in total. The, the course itself has three thousand four hundred and seventy-five linear feet of frontage on the, on the waters, on the river and brooks that, that abut it. There is a clubhouse, a parking lot, and a maintenance facility, um all on the course as well. Or on the property that is the course itself. Just so everybody understands too, as you look at that plan, left of, of Goff Brook is actually the town of Arundel, so Goff Brook separates the, the practice facility is actually in the town of Arundel, which is not, obviously not part of this, so that's, that's what that is. If you don't mind jumping to the PowerPoint, Nadia?
Yep.
So I'll try to make this as understandable as I can, um you can jump to the next one?
Yes, let me just load this up quickly.
There we go. So this course has been here a while, it was founded in eighteen ninety-six. The four, the forty-one house, which is the clubhouse itself, was constructed in nineteen, nineteen hundred. And it was put on the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand and nine. The course itself, although it started in eighteen ninety-six, in nineteen twenty, um. Thank Walter Travis, I couldn't come up with his name, um redesigned the course um in nineteen twenty. And over the course of time, things, you know, sort of got adjusted and moved and, and changed. In twenty-ten and twenty-twelve, the course made an effort to bring the course back to the original nineteen twenty design that Travis did at that point. Next slide, please. We are on the National Historic Register of Places. Walter Travis, um, he was a, a fairly well-known golf course architect of, of his day. It's significant in that it is an example that, um, sort of, of, of a course that he did, and it is only, the only one that was done in the state of Maine um by Travis. Next slide. There were previously permitted revetments that were put along the course. These, most of them date back into the two thousand range, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, in that time period. That was done, some of the court, the bridges were done about that time, there were new bridges put in that cross the, the brooks. Next slide, please. So the need for the project really um has, has developed based on our analysis. They do have ongoing erosion from storms. We have ice scour, and we also have debris that is helping to erode the, the marshes and the, the edges of the shoreline. There are undermined trees that exist, you can kind of see them running up along the river on the, on the right side of the river as it goes up and the left side of the first hole. And there's a fair amount of those trees that roots are, are undermined, and we'll show you pictures of that in a minute. There has been significant marsh erosion over the course of time, we, I'll show you some examples of that. The invasives have gotten into the edges of the property, so outside of the golf, or on the edges of the golf holes and, and mostly along the river, so we're working on that as well. And I think the last thing that we all are probably dealing with is sea level rise, and part of this project is in order to help to protect the course for the, the future. Next slide, please.
What do your measurements show in terms of sea level rise, how much uh?
So we, we're using, um, the Army Corps has, has some predictions on sea level rise, and they're anywhere between one point eight feet and four, about four feet, three point eight, I think it is. So that's a, that's what the Army Corps has projected. We have taken the approach on this project that we're going from the HAT, and our, our stabilization is going two feet up from that. So we're, we're looking at the two-foot range um in, in those projections. So, um, these are some of the eroded areas, you can see the upper-left picture there is, um, you can see the marsh that's sort of eroded and, and disappeared over time. Second picture to the upper-right, same thing's happening, you can see those chunks of marsh that kind of still exist along there. Those trees, which I'll, I'll show you some pictures in a minute, but those trees are all right at the highest annual tide right now. Most of the roots are undermined on the riverside, and you can see that, some of that down in the lower-left um side, down, lower-left picture, in the right picture.
There was a term that was used in the write-up, it was marsh seal, sill?
Sill, yep.
That's a term I'm not familiar with, if you could.
Yeah, absolutely, that, so the marsh sill, if you're looking at that, at, uh, let's go to the upper-right picture. That big white pine that's, that's on the right-hand side, and you see that chunk of um marsh that's there? The sill would be that, that piece that drops off from that marsh down to the, what I'll call the mud flat that's below it. That, that's the sill, so it's sort of that, and it varies out here, it's anywhere between probably, I don't know, one and a half feet, and some places that sill might be as much as four feet.
So it gets basically undercut and then drops off, right?
Yeah.
Because the roots are holding the other piece together.
Exactly, so a lot of what we're fighting here is, you know, as um marshes have high and low marshes. Oh, that's perfect, thank you very much. Figure out how to use it.
Just push the red button.
Hey, look at that, that's perfect, thank you, now I can talk. That's, that's it right there, that's, that's the sill, so um that, like I said, it varies in different places, but um we're seeing significant erosion, I'll show you in a minute some of the, um, some of the uh examples that we have of, of erosion. Uh next slide, please. Uh these are some other examples, um, can't really see it real well on this, these are some large oaks. This, this drop-off right here is probably about three to four feet, um, right there, that's that, that edge of the river. The marsh is completely gone in this space. This ac- this place here actually sees a lot of water that comes upriver on an incoming tide, and this area actually kind of, kind of swirls and erodes. This area over here has seen significant, this is that marsh sill along this edge right here. And um this, this has seen significant erosion in this place. So all those are all different examples of, of erosion that's happening.
Not, you might not know this, but is that kind of high tide, low tide?
That's, that is low tide, yeah, that.
So at high tide, would the, the mud be disappearing?
Yeah, the high tide actually is right up in here in this case, it, it runs, this, the marsh right there um is, is about high tide, right up on top of that. So marshes have low and, and um, low marsh and high marsh, we call it. The low marsh would get inundated on pretty much every tide cycle, the high marsh gets inundated occasionally.
King tides.
Yep, yep, exactly. So yes, you're, I think you're exactly right, what's happening are these chunks are coming out, you can kind of see one right there, it's starting to break off, and that's the same thing that's happening there, these marshes are starting to, to erode and, for all of those reasons that I mentioned before. Next slide, please. These are some of the issues that we see, so ice scour is one of those issues, you can see the ice all along here, this is along the river, this is up in Goff Mill Brook, um, and I'm not sure where that one is, oh, that's Bass Cove. And what happens is as that ice moves in and out, as, as the tides come and go, they just sort of rub along the edge of the, the shoreline and help to, help the erosion to continue, so. Next slide. Uh just some more ice scour, that's kind of the same thing. On the right-hand side, pressing the wrong button here, this, this is an example of the river that we have. Um that, that picture was taken after um a rain event, and it wasn't a real significant rain event, to be honest with you. It was, I don't know, an inch and a half or something like that, but you can see how brown that river gets. And Lena's gonna talk to you a little later about our other project, which is Downriver, which is the, receives a lot of this sediment and uh at the, at the yacht clubs down below, but what, the point of that is, is there's erosion kind of all along the river and, and the, all, as, up and down the river. We happen to be one place where we're right beside it and seeing significant erosion.
I've seen similar off of Durrell's Bridge.
Exactly. Yeah, you can see it on any real significant rain event in the river, it just turns that sort of chocolatey brown. Next slide, please. These are the under, some of the undermined trees, these are over near the, it's area H, we, and uh you can see just what's happening there on some of these large oaks, so the idea is gonna be to protect some of those.
Have, have you lost any trees over the course of years that have fallen into the river?
Yeah, yeah, we, they are, they are falling, and we're trying to do everything we can to sort of protect these as they are. Next slide, please. Again, just, this is, this is a zoomed-in version uh from a, from a drone, but you can see this is all along the first hole, which is area C, and you can see what's happening, um and this is where that marsh is kind of failing, it, that's really starting to become a, a low marsh versus a high marsh right over there, and that's very elevationally driven based on the, on the tide. Next slide, please. Just, just as a engineering point, these are mean velocities of um the, what, what soils erode at. So a vegetated area will erode at about three feet per second, if you had grass on a soil. Once the velocity of that, the water running over it or across it would, would start to erode. On bare soils, it's down about one feet per second. And we're figuring that the, um, based on this, our mean velocity at our point in the river is somewhere about three point five feet per second. So we're exceeding both a vegetated and definitely exceeding the bare part of that. So it's kind of obvious, I think, where, when you start to look at those.
Is your definition of vegetated area including a natural salt marsh?
Yeah.
Or just any vegetated area?
Um it, there would be a salt marsh, would be about three feet per second, yep. Next slide, please. The, this is some of the regression that we've seen, so this is from the town's um aerial GIS viewer. So this was two thousand and seven, at this location, this is on Goff Mill Brook, we had a, a marsh that was about thirty point six seven, and it's now, well, that was twenty twenty-two, it's down twenty-three point three six. Next slide, please. This one is over in area C, which is on the Kennybunk River, and again, twenty, pressing the wrong button here. This is two thousand and seven, we've got eight point three one feet of marsh, and that's down to two feet of marsh that's left there in that. We've got 8.31 feet of marsh and that's down to two feet of marsh that's left there in that same location. What that means, um, on the Kennybunk River, we have about 0.42 feet of marsh loss per year. And when you do the math on that. And that was pretty consistent. On Goff Mill Brook, it was about 0.48. And then on Bass Cove, it was about 0.34 feet per, um, per year that we're seeing the erosion. Next slide, please. Sea level rise. Um, it'll flip through these quick. This is, this is present-day sea level right here. And you can see this comes along the course here. The second T is right there, actually. So, an astronomical high tide actually covers the, a second T right now. Um, next slide. This is a 1.6 feet, um, projection of sea level rise. And you can see how these lines start to move in onto the golf course. And what that means is if we also get storms and erosion and velocities in those places, they're going to be that much worse. The next slide, please, is a 3.9 feet projection. And you can see how it's starting to come into the course in different places. So, we're working hard to try to protect that as that sea level rise, that we can, we can protect those edges. Next slide, please. So, the project goals are to stabilize the shoreline, um, try to implement some long-term solutions for that sea level rise. So, our designs are really based on elevation-driven and, and HAT. We're trying to obviously minimize the environmental impacts to the extent we can, um, protect the tree health, restore high and low marsh habitat for biodiversity and shoreline defense, remove invasive species, and try to balance all that against the, um, aesthetics and playability of the course. So, trying to, trying to maintain the course and keep it, keep its footprint wherever we can. Next slide, please. Um, we've, we've taken a sort of a, there's a couple of ways that shoreline work is looked at. And it's looked at sort of as a green approach, which would be the complete living shoreline approach and the gray approach, which would be a rock solution. And we've, we've done here what we, what we're calling is a hybrid approach, kind of the, to the two, um, parts of that. So, somewhere in the middle of that continuum. For the green part of this, we are doing some marsh restoration. So, in some places, I'll show you in a minute, where we're going to try to restore some of the marshes and build them back out a little bit. We're going to use native grass buffers. We're going to reuse existing native soils to, um, fill in, um, between the revetment where we're doing those. So, there will be rock put in and buried in places and you're not even going to know it's necessarily there. And we're going to fill that na- native soil back in between those rocks and actually put vegetation over the top of that.
So, that will require some dredging?
Um, it, it, I, I don't know that's dredging per se. It'll, yeah, there's mud, there's areas along the edge where we're, where we're digging, um, a few areas along the edge where we're digging along the edge of the river in the marsh. So, it's, it's right at the edge of that space.
Would you be doing that from a barge or would you be doing that from the land?
That's a good question. We're, 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 we're trying to get the answer on that. Where we, we are working with contractors and there may be some barge work here. It's going to depend. One of the biggest issues that the course, that, of, of construction of this is that the course, we obviously want to protect the course. And driving heavy equipment over it and things like that does not do the course any favors, right? So, we're hoping for a very cold winter that, that is, that works to our benefit. But we've also identified routes in which we're coming into the site where we will do that. And we're looking, actually costing out both, um, land approach and barge approach on... Barge doesn't work on everything, but it may work on some of these pretty well, so...
And just, uh, is ironically the invasive species better than native, uh, species in controlling that?
Not really. Um, they, they sort of choke everything else out, the, the, the invasive. So, the, the real, the real hope is that one, we can get the native species back in there and they, that will help to stabilize that better. What can happen is you can get some larger bush vegetation that leaves the ground bare, if you will, underneath it. So, that, if you just get runoff over that, it can erode it. So, the hope is to get more like a, um, a taller fescue grass growth along the edges of that and allow those natives to survive and, and protect that a little bit better.
Thank you.
We do have some riprap revetment and, uh, what we're calling riprap marsh sill protection. Um, and that protection is to, is to protect that edge as we sort of build out the, um, the marshes in a few places. Next slide, please. So, I'm going to skip through these areas, kind of where we're doing this. If you want to, if you want to refer to this plan, the, the one that we handed out, you can. But this is, um, just to orient you, this is River Road Hole Three. We have some eroding marsh along here. We've got some steep slopes. And these are actually all the invasives that exist along here and along here. And some of these trees are getting compromised or actually getting choked out by some of the, um, invasives that are there. Next slide, please. This is the proposed, um, solution in this area. There is a, this is one of the revetments that was done before. And this is rock that is exposed. It's a, it's on the slope. It's above the marsh. So, this is marsh area down in here. And this is a revetment that exists. We are proposing to put in, um, this, this revetment through here. And if you look at this detail, you can see what we're actually doing is putting this underground. We'll dig a trench. We'll put the rock in. And what this does is it helps to protect when sea level rise comes. We eventually will lose this marsh, but this provides what I'm going to call the backstop to the, to the, um, to the high water levels as they come through. We are proposing right now, this is that sill protection, which would be basically a row of rocks. And that, that goes right along the edge of the marsh right there. And the idea is to put that in there to protect that, that marsh area for as long as we possibly can. Next slide, please. This is Area C, which is along the, along the river, um, of the Kennybunk River proper itself. This is the first hole of, of the golf course. We do have, and these were some of the pictures we were looking at, the eroded marsh. All of these trees along this side are, are undermined and, and challenged. And there's a little bit of invasives along this, this strip. Next slide, please. So, this one is, is a, is a row of, um, riprap that will run along. We're saving all of these trees. So, this riprap will be put on the water side of those trees. There really isn't much at all of a marsh along this side. So, we will, we'll put that rock along this side. There's some up here that exists, but this will be, um, a rock revetment that will help to protect the slope and protect those trees.
And you'll backfill that on the backside with soil for the trees?
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, some of those trees, um, Mike will have to be, um, soil kind of needs to be packed up underneath those, I guess, as we're doing it. And then the, the rock will be put on the, on the face of that. Next slide, please. This is another area, both on, this is the first T. The clubhouse sits over to our right over here. And it's this area here that we identified as an area that's significantly eroded. There's one of the trees that was probably, has been lost somewhat recently. Next slide, please. And this one actually has a, a smaller portion over here. This is, I'm going to call it healthier marsh here. This is not, this is the part that isn't so healthy over here. We're really trying to protect the slope and, and the T that's there and keep that, keep that where we can. So, same idea, put this, this revetment in front of this, um, and protect those trees that are there.
Go, go back one slide?
Yep.
I don't know if you can on this photo, but with the laser pointer, could you roughly show where those areas are?
That, so the rock would be about here. See where this is bumping out a little bit? It's actually going across this, this space right here.
Across that line?
Yep, right through there. And, and the rock will be, if you see the trees here, I mean, the rock's going to be just this side of that. It's going to be just, so, in order to protect the trees, we're coming, I guess, towards the, towards the river.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, next slide.
Are you putting them in a geotextile?
We will on the backside of it.
Backside.
Yeah, because that helps protect the movement of soil. What happens is, um, is that when water moves into those rocks, it wants to, when it draws out of it, it wants to draw the soil out. And that geotextile helps to stop it from, from running back out.
Will you be pinning any of the rocks?
Yes, we will. I'm actually, the next slide, I'll show you one that we're going to probably be pinning. So, this is right at the, um, at the parking area. And you can see where, um, we do have ledge conditions. It's not everywhere. It's in some places. And where this is happening, we will pin rocks up to the upper part of the ledge, um, in those locations. So, this one is going to start, um, revetment's going to start here and it's going to move this, down this way. And there's another, um, if you go to the next slide, I think we might be able to show it. So, there is, there is rock. This was one of the ones I showed in the early slide that had been done previously. This was previously done. We're kind of filling in the, the gap on this. This happens to be in a place where the river narrows significantly. And I think the velocities get, get a little bit higher in this location. This slope maybe doesn't, this plan doesn't do it justice, but this is a pretty steep slope that comes down through.
Go back one slide.
Yep. Go back one. You can see that, yes. See that slope there? It's pretty significant. This, you, you want to make sure you don't drive past your, uh, past your edge there because it's going to be a quick ride down. All right, next slide. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Go, can you go back one, Nadia? The, the other thing that we're proposing here that I forgot to mention is we are going to put a curb. There's presently not a curb along the, the parking lot. And the reason for that is to control the runoff that, that is in that parking lot and direct it down these riprap, um, shoots. There's one there, there's one there, and there's an existing one that's right here. So, that will help to control that runoff that's coming down. And that's contributing to some of the loss on there. If we can control that and bring it down, then, um, we got a better chance of these areas, um, having less of an issue. Next slide, please. Area E. This is the, this is the 41 House, the club and the putting range. This is, um, existing revetment. And Area E extends out and around this way into Bass Cove. We do have completely eroded marsh kind of through this area here. And the marsh actually kind of picks up in, over here on this area. These very large oaks, this is probably, like I said, about a four-foot drop right in that location. And this, this is where we're seeing an awful lot of marsh regression back over here. We do have invasive species that exist all the way along this space that will be, um, removed as well, cut and removed. Next slide, please. These are some sections that sort of show you what is being proposed. So, we're not doing it everywhere, but this is the, this is the clubhouse. We're bringing the, um, the revetment around here. We have it here. This is where we're actually pinning to ledge in this location. So, the ledge is up kind of high in that location. Over here will be a buried revetment. This whole length will be buried in the slope up above the marsh. So, this is the, the detail of that, um, is, is that section right there where that rock will be buried. It will be covered over and vegetated over the top of it. Next slide, please. This is Area F. And you can see this was the, that, where I just finished was over here. This will be, this will be buried revetment over here, existing revetment there. What we are proposing here and what, actually what we're seeing here is this marsh sill. So, this was one of those, this was one of those measurements I showed you where we're losing it about, at about four tenths of a foot per year in this space. We got the marsh regression. We don't really have much of a, a wa- a buffer along here. So, one of the, one of the objectives here is to actually increase the height of the grass and create that buffer in that space. And we do have some invasives that exist mostly down at the end down here. Next slide, please.
What are the invasives, like regosa rows?
Um, they're not regosa, um...
Packberry was long?
Packberry.
Yellow iris?
Bittersweet, yeah. There's a, there's a list of them.
Trees down.
Yeah.
Yellow iris.
Yep, there's a little bit of that. There's thistle. There's, there's a, quite a few different ones.
Loose drive.
What's that?
Loose drive.
Yeah, we, yep, we do have that as well. Yep, there, it's, you know, it's kind of, there's a, obviously a large shoreline. So, there's all kinds of different ones in different places.
Yeah.
We, we do have a plan, which I'll show you in a minute, um, which shows that. But these areas in purple here are, or this is the project in Area F where we're actually doing some restoration of the marsh. So, this, the marsh exists in this space right here. This is what it is. The grade changes right at the base of this. So, this revetment would be buried in the slope and, and vegetated over. And this would actually become buffer. This blue-green area is actually what will become tall grass buffer in those spaces. Purple area will be restored marsh area through here. And this represents the rock sill that we're proposing along this space right here.
It's the front, the, this sill here.
Exactly, 100%. That's, that's that sill. This would be, part of this would be restoration of, of this. So, right now, that might come down right there. And we're building out part of that and re-establishing that. And this would be that buried revetment back behind it. That would be that piece right there. Next slide, please. Uh, Area F6, F5 and F6, um, just for the numbers here, just so you know, this was a, a numbering system that we came up with and started at Area A, B, C, and D. They, other than identifying where they are, that's, there, there's no other meaning than that than showing where they are. And they do show up on your plan, um, where those, where those areas exist. In this area, we do have the sill erosion. There isn't much of a marsh left right here. There's a pond right over here. And this is the entrance drive into the clubhouse. Uh, we do have the sill erosion. We have the, um, we have the marsh regression. The road itself on this side, which this picture doesn't show it real well, but that riprap is eroded over here. And there's, there's not a lot of buffer here between the golf course and the, and the marsh. And we do have invasive species that exist all the way down through here, down. The other project was off to our left that we just looked at. Next slide. This shows it a little bit better from the aerial view. That picture you were looking at was, was looking from here in this direction. So, just to orient you, we're proposing a buried revetment along here. That's just slightly above this. Riprap along the road right here that exists, mostly exists there. Some of it has been washed away. And these areas here represent all of the buffers that will be established along the edge of the course. And, and invasives removed out of, out of these spaces where, where they exist.
Buffers will just be replanted or will we also be adding soil?
Uh, not really adding soil. The invasives will be removed and, um, treated as necessary. And then seed will be planted in those spaces, um, grass seed. Again, it's all like mostly fescues that we're, we're proposing in those spaces and allowing natural vegetation to come back or native vegetation to come back. Next slide, please. Uh, Area H, and I'm getting towards the end, just in case anybody's falling asleep here. Um, we do have marsh regression here in this location. And you can actually see one of the trees that came down right over there. That was relatively recent. Um, we have scour at this bridge. That's, that's starting to work up towards the foundation. The foundation is right up there. Um, we do have invasives that run along this edge and they're actually back in here. Can't see them real well, but they're back in there. And there's not a whole lot of buffer in this space as well. Next slide, please. So, this, this plan would be to put in, um, just a revetment here. This will not be a buried one. This one would actually be exposed. And there's an existing one here that was previously permitted. So, we, that comes around to this point. Here, we're picking it back up. And this is mostly a pinning to ledge situation up at the top. And again, when we pin that to the ledge, we're going to bring the elevation up, um, you know, high enough that it, uh, it protects, it protects it. Also trying to protect the trees as that one indicates there. Next slide, please. So, this is our invasive's removal. I'll, I'll just flip through this real quickly. But these, these orange areas that you see are areas that all have been identified to have invasives. But when you look at these numbers, you can start to see the, the square footage of, of invasives that we're, we're dealing with. So, 116,000 is a couple acres, two and a half acres or so of land in this space. Next slide, please. Um, this one has 232,000 square feet. That's, uh, four, five, six acres of, of it. And then the blue represents the native buffer restoration areas that we're, we're talking about here. Next slide. Actually, that's, that, that was that area we were just looking at, at the driveway coming in and the, and that. So, this side is mostly, um, of this is, doesn't have any revetment, but it does have all buffer and invasives removal. Next slide. So, these are, these are our impacts. These are our wetland impacts. So, we, we have, um, almost 18,000 square feet of wetland impacts, which is obviously significant. At this point on our marsh restoration, we have about 3,700 square feet of, um... At this point on our marsh restoration, we have about thirty-seven hundred square feet of, um, of restoration of marsh area that we're doing. And though those were those purple areas I was showing you. And then this is the native buffer restoration areas that, that sort of go around the whole, the whole course. Uh, next slide. Um, I'm gonna s- finish up quickly here. Um, we did get comments and, um, from staff yesterday and, and that's what Lena handed out to you earlier. That's what these represent. Um, we do have, I'll flip through these quickly. They were looking for a seventy-five-foot setback from the HAT, which we hadn't shown. The plan that is included here does have that, um, seventy-five-foot setback shown on it. Um, item nine for parking. Um, I think we were, they were asking about, we do have a temporary access plan and we're coming in in a couple of places that aren't existing curb cuts, if you will, into the course. So we're gonna create those and ask that we, um, coordinate with the public works. And we will do that. We haven't done it yet, but we'll do that as, as soon as we can. Um, item eleven, uh, stormwater systems. We've shown the pipes of the, that project out of the edge of the golf course and like into the river and into the, the places where we know those pipes exist. We are not gonna change or adjust those pipes. We will simply build around them, if you will, and they will continue to discharge where they are. So we aren't changing any stormwater systems that exist on the site right now. Um, septic systems, we have added those onto the plan that, that we handed out. Um, there are three different septic systems, one for the maintenance building, one for a bathroom and one for the, for the clubhouse. Landscape buffer, item twelve, landscape buffer. Um, we have shown the grass buffer areas on here and the, the planting plan really, at this point, is a matter of planting fescues, which are, are, um, relatively high grasses and they complement the, the course itself. Um, so that's the, that's the plan to put in, um, native fescue grasses. Uh, item sixteen.
One of this twelve B?
Pardon me?
Twelve B, impervious.
Twelve B application, impervious calculations.
Yeah, could you go back a slide as well?
Yep. We have, shoreline will add, will add twenty-two thousand three hundred square feet of impervious area. The lot coverage calculations, we haven't, we haven't done those, but we have seventy acres of, of property. And I'm, I'm pretty confident we're good on the, on the lot coverage, but we'll, we'll provide that to you, that exact calculation.
The, uh, the riprap, where you're doing the revetment and you're doing the cloth and then you're burying it in soil, does that constitute an impervious surface?
I, I don't think it does. I think that's a, a point of discussion, I think, where, where we're burying it. I would say no. I would say where we're exposing it, yes. That would be my take on it, but.
Cause I know it's straight up revetment, we, or riprap in the shoreline, we considered that impervious.
We had.
Yes, because that's where that one went back, because they were expanded.
Point.
Yeah, so i- if it's not buried, we would call it impervious. Um, Galen and I did talk about it and we, we agreed that if it's buried and, and vegetated, we, obviously we would, we would call that vegetated surface, um, and recommended a, um, a, a condition in there. But yes, any revetment that's not buried, we would call that impervious.
If you could break out the percentage as difference?
Absolutely. Yep, exactly. Not a problem. Um, I think that is all of the items. Uh, flood hazard certificate, we'll, we'll do that. Typically, we do that at the, after your approval and start of construction. That's, and happy to have that as a, as a condition.
Yeah, we've, we've had a few now applications that have come in with, in the flood zone and we've, we usually just put a, a condition in those findings of fact.
We are looking for, uh, a few waivers, which I think were, um, discussed there. Um, the detail for a road, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have any roads that we're proposing, so we haven't proposed a, a road detail. We have no lighting changes that exist on the site, um, so we'd like a waiver on that one. Um, signage, same thing. We're not adjusting any signage on the site. And the floor areas are gonna see no change. There's no, no change to the building whatsoever on these, so.
And any of the accesses that you come in will be restored to their original?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, they would just be temporary to get. We're trying to find like the closest way to get to the water without touching too much of the golf course.
Right.
Right? So hopefully I still have you all.
The Corps of Engineers and the DEP, what are those? What other permits are you waiting on?
Um, those are the two that we're, we're, we are waiting on. We've met with, um, DEP and the Army Corps yesterday. And we are well in process with them and, uh, that just takes a little bit of time to sort of chug through the process with them. So we would hope, um, we could get the, we could get approval from the town, conditional upon those approvals. Um, and the, one of the major reasons for that is, um, lining up contractors. We hope to do the work this winter. Start in October, finish by April. Um, if we can do that, it allows, well, we have to do that because the course has to open back up in the spring. So we're, we're sort of battling a timeframe here to make this, um, come together.
Having said that, you were looking for an extension too, weren't you?
Yes, we would like an extension on this if, if possible, because, um.
Extension for?
Um, the, the way I understand and the way the approvals that I've seen here come with a six-month, um, sort of sunset, right, on your, on your permit. And if by some chance we don't get our other permits, for whatever reason, and we can't go to construction and we have to drag it over another year, which I hope doesn't happen. But what we would ask for is to make that a year rather than, than, um, make our approval good for a year rather than for six months.
We ran into this recently once before and it was, we don't give future extensions versus when it's needed, you can come and ask for it and review it to give it, but you wouldn't give it in the beginning an extension. I thought that's where we landed.
I think there's language in twenty, section twenty-four, eleven point seven. Um, the approving board may at the time of initial approval or upon subsequent request of the applicant, grant an extension of up to a hundred and eighty days upon showing the applicant that due to circumstances beyond his or con- his or her control, um, additional time needed to obtain necessary federal, state or local permits. That would, that's really our only issue is when, when we get our other, when we get our other permits. They're kind of a struggle right now.
So that takes a six-month window to a one?
To a one-year window, right. And that would allow us to, if, for some reason it didn't happen this winter, it could happen the following winter. The, the actual construction, cause we can pick up, um, the way that works is we have to apply for our land use permit in that either six-month or twelve-month period. So we would apply for that if it didn't happen this year. We would apply for it next summer for a land use permit whenever, whenever this one, that twelve months were about to expire.
Yeah, it, it, the, the section that says, it may, um, the time of the initial approval or upon subsequent request, so they can.
Either or.
Yeah.
I thought it was, I didn't realize the first part was in there, so, okay, that's good. That makes sense.
Um, I do have a question, just with the supplemental information that's here.
Yep.
Um, I appreciate learning about the, uh, plantings. I do think that'll work in a, a high salinic environment. Um, the question I had was in the supplemental material. I'm just trying to follow the details on the pages. Um, I'm not seeing C eleven point one, uh, and two on the details on these sheets. Is that just misnumbering or am I?
Whereabouts is that, Galen? I'm sorry.
Um, so if I was on, um, sheet, uh, C point, C, C zero point one, which is the site overview of the west.
Yep.
Um, I see it says go to seat, sheets two point zero and two point one. Um, and there's other details, you know, different sections, but I'm not seeing the new submitted sections for C eleven point two and eleven point one. That's where you have your marsh restoration of the sill with bo- uh, boulder protection.
Okay, I'm gonna let Lena answer that question. Come on, come up here.
Hi, Lena, Toby from Walsh Engineering. Um, so the supplemental information package, the, in the letter, the last piece of that was, we forgot to include the details in our original submission. Um, so those, the first two pages of that plan set are just updated plans. The last three, the detail sheets are just supplemental to the whole larger package and refer to sheets that are not in that miniature package you just got.
So they, they complete the package.
Okay, yeah, I was looking on the online application too. I just didn't see those, those details labeled. So I didn't know if it was just a mislabeling, if it was just different sheets that.
Do you mean like referencing back to the plan set and where those occur?
Yeah.
Um, so the names of the details, not the numbers of the details are referenced throughout the plan set. So there'll be a, a detailed call out on the plan pages that say, C wetland mitigation detail. And that refers back to those eleven sheet, um, C eleven sheets.
Okay.
May I stop at C ten-three?
Yeah, so that supplemental package I just gave you includes the C eleven sheets, which should have been in your original submission package. I just admitted them on accident, frankly.
Yeah, those should have been part of the full package.
I, I had a quick, uh, question about the access point, the temporary access points. If you would be able to just quickly touch base with public works before the next meeting?
Yeah, well.
That would give me some peace of mind and just in case, you know, the planning board approval goes through, you go to public works, they say, no, this is, you can't have access points here. So if you could just touch base with them quickly, I mean.
Absolutely.
That would be, that'd be great.
Yep, not a problem at all.
Cool.
So it's a little bit of information.
It's interesting.
If I was a golfer, I would ask for a field site visit.
Right?
You could still ask for a site visit.
So Bill, for, um, our educational purposes, the, uh, the one detail that you're, you're showing with the, the buried revetment.
Yep.
Is there any examples in town that the planning board, I've never seen it done. I'm just curious.
No, no, we dreamed this up, believe it or not.
Okay, so no, no, not, nothing in town, but nothing any, you didn't steal this from some other location in the country or anything?
No, I think we, you know, as we sort of processed through this and thought about the, um, the golf course and the playability of it, um, it, it started to come together and make sense to us, like why are, why do, why can't we bury this? Um, it, it's gonna exist there and it's gonna act as that backstop, um, for it. And there's one section that I, actually I didn't point out, it's on the thirteenth hole, um, where we, where there is exposed revetment and we're actually gonna bury that one. Um, so that will be go, go from riprap to a, to an actual buffer. Um, we had, um, do you know Pete Silinski? Have you met Pete? So he was out, he was out here yesterday. He's from the state. Um, he's sort of the shoreline guru and had him and showed him the project yesterday, walked him around and, um, they, they were, seemed to be in favor of it. I can't say they approved it, but they were, they were in favor of it, so.
Yeah, I'd never seen the detail before and I was just curious.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little challenging to build, right? Because you gotta sort of fill in the voids in between the rocks as you're backfilling it, but, um, I think it's the right approach in this, in this condition.
I don't, I don't see how you bring a barge in there. That, that river is pretty serious in that stretch.
Yeah, we have, um.
I don't think you get under the bridge and dock square.
Well, Nina will let you through.
We, we've talked to somebody who says he can do it, believe it or not.
Okay.
It's a small barge. It's not a very big barge.
All right.
Like an erector set?
Yeah, yep, exactly. So it's, it's a pretty small one, but it apparently can be done.
It, it's a very complex, uh, plan and a lot, a lot of work, obviously.
Yeah.
With the, uh, being part of the historic register, does that affect your ability to alter the course?
It, it does to alter the course, but not to do these improvements, cause we're not really altering the course, per se. If we were to, um, somebody suggested.
Well, here's where I'm going with this.
Yep.
The, uh, the river and erosion and tides have a mind of their own.
Yes.
And wait for no person. And, uh, if they're gonna re, if the river is going to reclaim marsh up to the ledge, which it seems to be doing, and there's a, there's a dynamic there and how much of the erosion been affecting the removal of the marsh versus the river itself and the rising tide, uh, would it be possible to reposition part of the golf course in order to accommodate the advancing water?
It's, it's a serious challenge. So this course is on sev- this part of the course is on seventy-plus acres. Um, if you were to design this course today on a, if you had land to do it, you would probably be in the hundred and fifty acre range. It's, it, it is that, that course has been designed so tightly that, um, you really don't have much room to move on it. Um, and that's the.
Few more par threes, pitch and putt.
Yeah, that's be, starts to change the length.
No, but I mean, uh, you know, serious considerations. There are a lot of properties in town right now that are facing, what are we going to do along the shore?
Yep.
Uh, I mean, there is a beautiful wall on St. Anne's with rock, uh, facing that, uh, after one storm, they decided, maybe we skip the rock face and go up another two feet.
Yep, yep. And that's essentially kind of what we're doing here, is we're taking this up and putting the rock up two feet above that, um, above that HAT line.
Okay. I understand it and I understand that you have a lot of permits that will be asking questions that are beyond the scope of whatever we can, uh, we'll have to rely on that expertise.
Yes.
So if we were to look at an application like that, would that involve us, uh, I mean, there, there are certain waivers for lighting and signage and, and that kind of thing?
I think there, there was like four or five of the waivers that were called out and they haven't seemed very reasonable.
Yes.
But then there's the alphabet soup of waiting for permits.
Well, or given the six-month extension.
I, I think our hope would be that we could get a conditional approval based on those, based on those permits.
And that's something that's been done before, I believe.
An impervious surface is calculated based on the total area of a property, correct?
Uh, yes, Galen and I actually, just a couple minutes ago, reconfirmed that. The whole lot is not in shoreline zone.
No, I remember.
Um, so you, so, but we'll use the whole lot for the calculation of impervious surface coverage.
There was a, there was a, an outbuilding that was added up, oh, three, four years ago.
Yep.
That we just had to have delineated where is the shoreline on the map so we could all see it. And this is all shoreline. That is in fact the definition of it.
Right.
Um, how does it, uh, work are, where you are reclaiming land that is down below that tide? That might not, where does the property line extend? Does property line extend to the middle of the river? Or does it extend to the?
Yeah, I think they own both sides of that, so they, they would own, they would own through the river.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I meant on the Kenny Monk River, cause there are private properties on the other side. They're not part of the golf course.
Right, so we're just doing it obviously on our side.
Yep.
And the side we own, so yeah, I think it does.
Where does the property line go? If I look at the deed, does it say?
I think it goes to the river.
Goes to the river?
I think to the center of the river. Yep.
Okay, thanks. You guys have any other questions?
I don't.
No, that was a very good package presentation. Is the presentation gonna be on the SharePoint site?
I can put it on the SharePoint.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Sure.
So finding complete? Make a motion?
We oughta go through the waivers too, just formalize them.
Yep. Well, let's go through the waivers. So the, the conditions are, do we have a list of the permit? Uh, Army Corps, Department of Animal Protection.
Yep, it's Army Corps and DEP.
And who else?
Arizona list provided with the original.
That's in the original application?
Yep.
All set?
Yep.
It was your NERPA, your individual standard permit, right?
Okay, so, uh, waivers would be?
Ken?
Yeah. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Yep. Area signs and lights.
Yep.
Does all seem reasonable?
Yes.
Make a motion to grant those wa- make those waivers?
All right, second.
Yep, I'm in favor of that.
Favor. Should we also grant the six, the six-month extension?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
As am I.
Because we have all these permits going on.
Uh, make it, it's not a waiver, but it would be a condition.
I've, I've never recorded that, defining the fact, how would we record that?
Probably-
I think, I think you could probably record it at the end, um, in conditions, you say the applicant has a year.
Right.
Yep.
And so make it a condition.
Or 360 days, I guess.
Uh, the, the staff recommends adding a condition, uh, that the revegetation plants are strictly adhered to because it's part of that calculation. So that's another condition?
Yes.
Do you have, uh, any other kind of, uh, motions you'd like to make?
I think it's complete.
I would second, uh, make a motion and it's complete.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a case manager.
I'll take it.
Thank you, Peter. You get a site walk, right?
Site visit? I'll take it.
And you wanna do the public hearing on the second?
Public hearing on the second of July?
We'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
So will we.
Thank you.
That brings us to 25501 Eight Langford Road. Betsy's, Kristy Kenny, agent, thank you for hanging in and waiting, Kristy. But you got a fascinating education.
It's hard to follow that presentation.
You, you saw it here first. What are we calling this, uh, this revetment, this covered revetment? What do we call that? You better come up with a good term.
You have two weeks to come up with the name.
Epic inventment.
All right, thank you. Hi, Kristy.
Hi. I'm Kristy Kenny from KW Architects. I'm here representing David Betsy's, who is the owner of Eight Langford Road. We are here for a public hearing to change the use of 200 square feet of an existing retail space from 600 square feet to 800 square feet, and we will be removing that 200 square feet from existing warehouse space. There'll be no change in the lot, uh, in the square footage of the building. We are, I don't know if you wanna pull it up or I can, I have other boards here. The resulting change of 200 square feet will, uh, we will add one parking space to the rear of the lot. We are reconfiguring, configuring the parking spaces in the back to be from three spaces to four, and those four spaces will all meet dimensional requirements at 10 by 20.
And how you did the geometry on that fix was amazing. How you did the geometry on that fix was, was amazing.
Well, we are rotating them so that, and they still fit within the 10-foot setback requirement.
Over approach. I'm wondering if the board, before we go into the public hearing, because there is a public hearing tonight, does the board have any other questions on this? Who's the case manager of this? Is it Ed? Must be Ed.
I have no idea.
It may be. I think it's Ed.
It's not Ed, I'll take it.
I think it's Ed. Board has no other questions. I will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this application?
President.
I don't see anybody running up to the mic. Uh, is there anyone on Zoom with a hand raised?
No hands raised.
I am going to close the public hearing. I should have brought like my meat pounder, so I can whack it on the table. So would anyone like to make a motion based on this information?
I make a motion that we approve this application.
Well, I'll second it. Gotta do something. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
So findings of fact, uh, next meeting on the second, and you don't have to be here.
Right, I'll drop off, uh, unfolded site plan sign.
You bet.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I'm sorry.
Are you invited to this meeting? Uh, this brings us to item 25050222, New Bedeford Road, Eric Peterson, agent. And I see him in the room. This is, uh, setting up for the public hearing. Would you like to re, uh, state your name?
I'm Eric Peterson from Peterson Design Group.
And a quick review of this project?
Yes.
Which you went through in detail.
Yes, so we have a combination of things, some, uh, land use, uh, or landscaping and hardscaping changes to the property in concert with renovation and reconfiguration of the existing house. Let's see, I'll hit the high points here. So we are talking about, on my side of things, talking about a 13.8% uh, increase in volume to the existing house under the allowed 30% increase and a 25% increase in area, which, as we discussed, falls mostly as an expansion of second floor space. That's a 25% expansion. The height of the existing house is 28.57 feet and proposed is 29.75 feet from average original grade, so falling under the 30-foot height restriction that's allowed. The closest point of the existing house to the resource, the marsh in this case, is 34 feet, and we're proposing the closest new footprint, um, distance to the resource of 40 feet. So not any closer than the existing, um, house. Let's see, so we modified this last time for you to include both lots. That was the, uh, uh, for a point of clarification. Yep, the, yeah, I gave you the deeds, you had the deeds for the last meeting.
The tree moved and the-
What's that?
And the tree moved.
Tree survey moved the tree.
Yeah, right.
The jumping tree.
Todd gets to talk about that. So Lot 4, which is the larger of the two lots, if we pull that up, the, the right-hand side lot. It has a gross size of 28,924 square feet and a net lot size, um, above the, um, elevation seven of 27,198 square feet. Lot 4B, which is the smaller lot to the left, um, is 16,527 square feet. So, uh, we have some percentages of lot coverage to go over that are in the application, but really Todd's better equipped to speak to those things. Talking about relocation of parking, um, and some changes to vegetation and hardscape. Are there any questions on the building side of things for me?
You're not putting up any signs?
No.
Okay.
Or changing the lighting?
We do, well, we, we, I have in, in the, in my narrative, I do have that we will meet the town's lighting standards and we'd like to seek a waiver for any signage. There's no signage proposed for this.
Agreed.
So we can write that in as a, as a meeting the standard and then asking for a, a waiver for the signage standard.
Was that done last week or two weeks ago?
I believe so.
Say that again?
Well, I say, were those waivers granted two weeks ago?
Well, we asked for, it's in my narrative that, it's not a waiver for lighting, it's saying that we'll comply with the town's lighting standard.
No, the sign.
Oh, yeah, I think we discussed it last time.
We discussed it, we'll stick it in as a waiver.
That it would be part of the findings of fact that we will, it'll be registered that we asked for a waiver for signage.
We used to just ignore that stuff.
Say that again?
We used to just ignore that stuff, now we're dotting the-
Nadia's in town now, we're talking about all of our waivers and not.
I'd like to have everything covered, you know?
Any questions from the board before we go to a public hearing?
No.
Same, pardon?
I wondered if there were any questions from the board before we went to a public hearing? I mean, unless you wanna go back over the landscaping plan.
That's up to you, how, how in-depth you want us to.
I think I'm good.
I think we're okay. I think you've, you've covered that quite well.
Okay.
I would suggest that we, uh, open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this application? All right, please identify yourself.
My name's Timothy Friedel, uh, my wife's Jennifer King, and I own 20 New Bedeford Road, which is adjacent, adjacent to these two properties. We've been year-round residents of Kennybunkport since July of 2019. I wonder if we could bring up the, um, there's a page on the SharePoint called Tree Survey Final, it's a PDF, I think helpful. Uh, and if it could, is it possible to zoom in a little bit just to see, um, there are a couple of trees to-
Where would you like to zoom into?
Well, let's just leave it where it is right for the second.
Oh, you got the laser pointer?
Did you take, did you take them?
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. There we go, okay. So, um, uh, well, I wanna say thank you for the role that you play on the board and the staff, um, and within the community, so this is, uh, we appreciate it. Uh, so we care a lot about the legacy trees and, uh, thank you for saving that 24-inch in diameter maple tree right there. The moving tree. And, um, as the proposed project moves forward to construction, we have a request to make because we're interested in saving, uh, and maintaining the health of this 30-inch oak tree and also the, you know, the 24-inch maple that we talked about. So our, our request is that, uh, before the start of construction, we ask that the applicant install a chain link fence with green privacy fabric because we're living here year-round. That would be approximately 15 feet this side of the two trees in question. Yes, exactly, right. Um, and that further that there was, uh, there would be a construction driveway that was created inside that fence, uh, so as to protect the trees as much as possible. So that construction driveway would be temporary.
You mean outside the fence?
Well, this side of the fence.
Oh, okay, all right, got it.
I think, uh, yes, exactly. And then, uh, once the construction, uh, was completed, then we would kind of assess, um, the health of, especially the maple tree, the 24-inch maple tree. And then, um, if that tree is still healthy, uh, we would, uh, entertain the idea of perhaps routing, in order to protect the tree in the long term, routing the driveway into our property, um, so as to be outside the canopy of the tree. Right, yeah, in that way, yes.
Okay, that necessitate a, a right-of-way?
I do, if you put access on another lot, I think we would want to see easement language in a deed, so we would need an updated deed.
An updated deed with easement language.
Okay. So that's it in terms of the, our, our comments and requests, so thank you.
So, uh, a couple of questions.
Sure.
This fence, if it's 15 feet to the right of that oak, that would be on your property, correct?
Uh, the-
If it's going here, or do you want it along the property line?
It would be, uh, if you imagine going 15 feet to the right of that oak tree from my, my perspective, um, that would be on the applicant's property.
On the applicant's property?
Right.
So it would be over in here?
Right, I, I think, maybe, yes.
Okay.
Right, and the same with the maple tree. So then the, as far as I understand, they're taking out the, uh, a number of trees so that they could have access, you know, the heavy equipment could get around, uh, to the back of the property if needed.
Okay. Eric, if you could come to the mic?
Sure. I was just asking if, if Tim could use the laser pointer and, uh, point out exactly where he's talking about this, the easement point, push the red button.
Yeah. In terms of the fence, sorry?
Okay, so we can all understand where he's talking.
Okay, so the, um, uh, red button, okay. So here's the tree and then measure 15 feet this way, so that would be the left-hand edge of the driveway. And likewise with the maple, the, um, it would be 15-
Does it sound, is it here that you're asking for it?
Yes, exactly, right, yep, yep. So the idea was to go, you know, 15 feet from the trunk of the tree so as to protect the root system of the tree. So basically the driveway, the construction driveway would be routed on the applicant's property. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Where you're asking for the deed?
Yeah.
And what, how long, like where would it end?
Is it, is it mainly to protect the tree, right? Is that what you're asking?
Both the maple tree and that, that oak tree, right, yeah.
And who's it-
So what you're looking for is protection to make sure vehicles don't go close to and destruct the canopy of the trees?
Yeah, I mean, the, the concern is the heavy equipment going on, uh, on that driveway would compact the soil and, and disrupt the root system. I mean, Todd would know about, more about this than I do, but, uh, we just wanna protect the tree and the two, those two trees and, uh, and I think this would do that.
So this would be temporary?
Right, exactly, right.
Incursion into your property, so you wouldn't need a deed then, would you, or deed to?
Well, no, it's, it's not, it would be onto the applicant's property. So our property is to the left of-
Right, yours here.
I understand.
Right, yes.
But with respect to avoiding the, the root system of the maple tree in particular?
Right.
You'd be going onto your property.
Right, that would be in the long term, right, yes.
Oh, that'd be the long term?
Right, yes.
That's permanent, okay.
Right, right.
So that would be somewhere in here, is what I was understanding. Okay, that would require a deed between you and them worked out.
Gonna talk into the mic.
Mic to mic. That would require an easement and your deed for them, uh, to do that, and it sounds like the fence is just some, well, a fence, but a barrier or some, some sort of thing that would keep the construction vehicles and people out, not necessarily a privacy fence, but a protection.
Right, so the, yeah, we had a, uh, we had some experience with this building our own home where we had, you know, basically like a snow fence, uh, that was there, but the construction team moved it to move things in and eventually the oak tree died as a result. So we, we wanna have a fence that is, is not movable.
Okay, 'cause I know they were taking certain precautions, if I remember right, and you putting some DIA textiles down and things like that.
Yeah, and-
Specifically to protect the root system of the tree, so I know they're already taking measures to do that.
And we very much appreciate that, yeah. So that's the longer term where I think the proposed driveway would be along the, um, the right-of-way there that's defined. So, um, but we're, what we're suggesting is that, uh, after the construction is done, we wanna assess or have the, the health of the maple tree assessed. So we don't know how well it's gonna do through this whole process, but assuming that it's healthy, we would like to have the driveway, um, move further away from the tree so as not to disturb the root system, so.
It, it would seem that that would be creating a driveway and then creating a second driveway after the fact. Would, if the, both parties are amenable, would that be part of the design where there were an easement and the driveway were constructed, uh, along that boundary in the first place?
Right, uh, what we're trying to avoid is trying to avoid, um, the, the construction driveway would be temporary. Uh, and, uh, what we're trying to do is move the, the heavy equipment, uh, at least 15 feet from the, you know, the-
Right, no, I, I do understand that.
Right, and the driveway, uh, the permanent residential driveway would be constructed after construction was completed.
Okay, so you're really referring just to the, for the purposes of construction, you're willing to allow them to pass over your property?
No, that's not, that, that would be the permanent.
That would be the permanent, okay.
Right, right, right.
I-
Sorry if it's confusing.
No, no, that's fine. I, I just, I, I wondered if the, uh, if anyone from the other design team wanted to make a comment on that possibility? And make certain that you guys understand what, what is being discussed.
I've, I have a quick, a quick question. Have you discussed your, your, um, desire to move the driveway onto your property with the property owner?
No, I mean, literally, we got the, uh, uh, we received the, uh, notice of the hearing yesterday in the mail, and then we met with, uh, some landscaping and tree people, uh, this morning, and, uh, this is the plan that we came up with in, in less than 24 hours, so we've not had a chance to talk with the applicant about it.
Okay.
Is the oak tree on your property?
Yes.
Okay. And the maple tree is on the applicant's property?
Yes, yes.
I, I'd suggest that someone from the, the design team comment on that, just so I make certain that you're clear on what, what's being discussed?
Sure, Todd Richardson, met you before from Richardson Associates, Laid Escape Architects. I think the idea of putting tree protection or putting protection around the tree during construction makes a lot of sense to save the tree. I can't speak for the owner of the property in regards to future easements and other things like that that would be long-lasting, I just don't have, it's not my right to do that.
Okay.
But I think in terms of, you know, as we've come forward over several meetings here, you know, the notion of the ability to protect that tree, at first we thought we were going to take it down and then we had lower village survey identify where it was and then we came back to you a few weeks ago saying, we're going to take measures to keep it.
This is Act Three.
Right, I think the suggestion of some silk fencing or protection for the roots during construction is a good one and I think that there's an existing driveway there now. It could be used before it switches over to the lane that's proposed from the team.
And also, I don't know who the contractor is, but during construction, you know, it's easy for some just to pull their truck up and park next to the tree because it's shady and just so that's protected and keeping that from happening.
Yeah, there's compaction issues as well as damage to the tree, I've witnessed all of that in construction, so, yeah, I think that is a well-suggested provision.
Okay.
To protect the tree during construction.
I don't know that the board put that into.
You're, the board is allowed to put conditions in to protect any vegetation they'd like to. It's not, you don't have to put that condition in, but it is something you are allowed to do.
Well, I happen to know the case manager personally.
You've talked to him before?
Talks to himself all the time.
The property owner, I believe, is on Zoom and has his hand up, so maybe it'd be a good time to let.
Well, well, first, is there anyone else from the public who wanted to speak who's in the room? Okay, let's open up the Zoom call and bring in a hand that's raised and please identify yourself.
Brad, you have to unmute yourself, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, I just did, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, sorry, sorry I couldn't be there today, I'm, my wife and I live in Pasadena, California, so it's a bit of a trek out there. And if you need a case manager for that cable Rundle course, I'm happy to do that for you, I'm a long-term member there, so. I, I, you know, certainly we want to take every effort to protect a tree if, if, if possible and happy to provide any kind of ample fencing to, to do that for sure. Todd, Todd Richardson's worked on the property for 35-plus years and the whole plan is to improve the property overall. We, you know, the way that I, I kind of look at this is, I think the current driveway that bifurcates, which goes by that maple tree is about three, maybe four feet away from the tree. My sense is that once we get to a place where we put the, the driveway into that right-of-way area, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, I believe that's a nine-foot driveway that gives us a six-foot distance, so actually probably three or four feet more than what the current driveway provides for the, for that tree. I don't know whether it makes sense to, to get to that place and, and get approved, but then I'm certainly open and willing to work with Tim and Jennifer to develop a, a new easement if, if in fact they're not satisfied with the driveway distance. But I think, Todd, you can probably speak to this, I think the way that we have it planned that, that would give ample distance from the maple tree that would allow it to, to not have any effect on the maple tree and certainly some of the meshing and inserting of the new driveway will take into consideration that. So, the only thing I say is, is open to that, but it'd be nice to get approved to, to move forward with the project where, you know, given, and Todd, maybe you can speak to the, the width of the driveway and the distance of that maple tree compared to the existing driveway.
If you, Todd, if I remember right, you planted that tree?
Yeah, yeah, with Jen and Brad's back.
Your bare hands.
Yeah, yeah, I planted myself, no. I think in the last packet that we submitted, we had the proposed offset from the tree once we got the new survey location of the tree and there's a kind of a construction detail that we included that in, suggested using a reinforced fiberglass meshing to distribute the weight-bearing of the, of the vehicles that would come up the driveway from the tree. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, we proposed that 10 feet in each direction to extend that out and we don't excavate down to impact the tree roots that's placed on top of the tree roots so that we're not damaging the tree to, to do that.
What I'm, what I'm hearing, Todd, from the neighbors, from the neighbors is that they are concerned about a tree that is not on their property and are willing to, if needed, create an easement that would go around that tree if it looked like that tree was suffering any particular damage from the new driveway. Now, it may happen that the driveway goes in and the tree is just doing fine for the next 100 years, wouldn't that be great? But if, and I'm also hearing from the property owner that he's amenable to know if it looks like they need to nudge a driveway over a couple of feet and create an easement to do that, that that's not out of the, the realm of possibility.
So, in terms of practicality and the approval for the project and these subsequent things that we're talking about?
That would be subsequent to this, it wouldn't have anything to do with this application.
Okay.
I, I'm, 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 no, I would think to some extent that's a conversation between.
Neighbors.
The neighbors after the fact. I don't know if you guys have any role in what, if the neighbors want to give up some of their land to put their neighbor's driveway on it, that's.
That's between the neighbors.
Between the neighbors, has nothing to do with the planning board.
And, and the tree.
Right.
So, I guess I would offer that to keep it clean, we could approve a layout today and hold the idea of that.
Preservation of vegetation.
Right-of-way in advance until we see if it's needed or keep it, keep it outside this, this potential approval.
That would be a separate issue, that would be a separate issue.
Do you feel like that would need to come back to planning board on its own?
I don't think so, if someone creates an easement, that doesn't need to come to the planning board.
Okay. Can Brad chime in on that, his opinion?
Yeah, appreciate that, thanks Eric, happy to do that, I think that makes a lot of sense and again, open to, I'd like to not be held off from moving forward with the project as we've gone through this process, but you have my word that if, if in fact there's, there's reason to take a little bit of the property, budding property to give that a little more distance, happy to, to be amenable to make that happen, so, you know, we'll cross that bridge when it comes.
Seems very reasonable to me.
So, I do, I do have a question of clarification, so is the Butters property that is proposing the driveway, is that within the 75-foot of the high watermark?
The area that we're talking about?
Their land that they are.
Part of it is probably, right?
Cause that would have to come back to the planning board if it is within the 75 feet, that's why.
For the easement?
What, what we're talking about is outside 75.
Yeah, 75 is the, is the purple line.
And Galen, it doesn't come at you from the other side either, cause you can see behind the smaller lot, the 75-foot line, see how it kind of swoops around to the left?
You're inside the swoop.
Right there, that's 75, this is all 75 out here, not right here.
Yeah, so we're good.
Okay. Good question though, I'm going to ask, are there any other people on Zoom who have a hand raised who would like to make a comment?
No others.
In which case, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll motion to approve the, the plan.
With waivers for signage.
With waiver for signage.
And a note that lighting will meet the town's requirement.
And that vegetation will be preserved to the fullest extent.
Are we going to put the fence in, the temporary fence?
I, I don't think we can dictate a temporary fence on construction, I think that's something that would be worked out with code enforcement and construction, what do you think?
We actually don't require permits for fences, so, I mean, you guys are certainly welcome to put a temporary fence on your property to protect the, the oak and if the applicant is amenable, they can put a fence on theirs, but they wouldn't need additional permitting for a chain link.
Robert Frost had something to say about that.
As long as it's less than six feet in height, so.
That's right, good fences make good neighbors.
Good fences make good neighbors.
The, the fence would be on the applicant's property, not on our property.
So, that's something, I mean, you could discuss that with the applicant, they wouldn't need a special permit for a fence.
Yep.
The mending wall.
The mending wall.
That's the poem.
It is.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it was it, we got a motion on the floor here. So, do I hear a second?
Second.
All approved, aight, here we go, thank you.
Thank you all, it's been a long process, we appreciate you.
It has, great detail, findings of fact and next.
I will drop off a complete, you want the whole thing with a signature block?
That's what Nadya wants.
Yeah, the whole thing with the signature block, I believe it's already on one of those sheets, rolled.
Rolled, yes.
One, one.
And it's not us being crazy, it is, the, the registry of deeds won't take it if it's folded. We would like two copies, one for the office, one for the registry.
Gotcha.
And findings of fact, next hearing, next meeting, you don't have to be here.
Oh, you can come.
Show up, you might have another project. All right.
Thanks, thanks again.
Thank you all, thank you neighbors. And just point out, in case anybody's watching, we do have openings on the planning board, there are three openings at the moment and a fourth one showing up, so it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun, the planning board.
You learn a lot.
If you have a Kennebunkport address full-time, it's a lot of fun. So, we have four items, 250503, 504, 505, 506, they are all along Ocean Avenue and I'm going to suggest that we have a, we have a, a public hearing listed on one of them, but not on all of them.
Sorry.
I think we have a public hearing listed on one of these items, but not on all of them, but I think we have a public.
Is it not, it's not listed on all of them?
It's not listed on all of them, it's only listed on 505, but I'm going to assume that this is a public hearing for all four of them.
Yes, and notice was sent out to Butters for all four, so.
And I, you, if you want to outline quickly what the project is, we can probably move ahead to public hearings.
Absolutely, my name is Lana Toby, I work for Walsh Engineering Associates. The project, the, all four projects are Kennebunk River dredging projects. It's at four marinas on the Kennebunk River here in Kennebunkport. It's the Arundel Yacht Club, the Yachtsman Marina, the Kennebunkport Marina and the Kennebunk River Club. We are proposing a mechanical dredge this coming winter of those four marinas. Basically, the sediment levels in those marinas right now is getting to the point where on a low-tide cycle, the boats are having difficulty navigating through those marinas and are starting to bottom out. So, we're just proposing to do what is called a maintenance dredge. This dredge has been done in the past at each of these four marinas and we will just dredge down to the mean-low water elevation of minus six with a foot of over dredge built into there. So, that will get us down to an elevation where we won't need to do this dredge again for probably seven to 10 years hopefully. And I think that's really it, I have a full presentation that we did last time and we can bring that up if there are any questions related to any of that.
Are there any questions related to this project?
Um, one thing I would like to mention is I have a, a correction from last time. There was a question asked by the board as to whether any of the marinas were going to replace any of their docks. I said, no, there is actually one marina that's going to be replacing their docks. The Arundel Yacht Club at 51 Ocean Avenue is going to be replacing their docks, but it will be same exact dimensions, same exact locations, same exact piling structure, it will just be new docks themselves.
Will that be a separate application to the board or does that need to come before the board, if it's just replacing a dock?
So, normally it would be required if there was a replacement of a dock, they would have to come back before you.
Yeah, so that will be a separate application to the, to the board for replacement of the dock?
Okay.
We get, we get touchy about docks.
Makes sense, all right, we'll file that, thank you.
So, with that.
There's no footprint change, right?
No footprint change, yeah.
Someone go to the board, selectmen first, so, yeah.
New pilings?
No, same pilings as before.
Same pilings, okay.
Could it be part of this application or?
They never reviewed it, did they?
We didn't, we didn't see any plans for, for.
I, I would say it gets a little hinky with our process just because we do require this public hearing and then a vote to approve or deny the application within 60 days, 60 or 30 days of deeming it complete. So, for you guys to pull together all the materials we would need, we would be potentially going over our deadline that we have to meet to approve or deny the application, so it would be much cleaner for us from a process standpoint if you submitted a separate dock application. So, I think if we, if we had caught this last time, we could have delayed this, but we, our clock is ticking now, so we would probably go over that if we did another couple of reviews.
Okay, I mean, I think in terms of supplemental information, it would just, it could just be a cover letter and then just the plan you guys have already seen, just because that shows the docks in their current configuration, it's just a, a switch out of.
What you're talking about is simply taking what you've got there now, it's aged out, so you're just going to kind of lift it up off its pilings?
Which we're going to do anyway.
Right, I'm just saying, put a brand-new one down.
Exactly, yeah, when we go to put the docks black, it would just be a new one, yeah.
As part of the construction, as the dredging process, the docks will be removed.
Correct, yep, they'll take out the docks and the pilings.
The docks will then be replaced.
Yep, once we do the dredging complete.
This one instance, for which one is it?
This is for the Arundel Yacht Club.
Arundel Yacht Club, when they replace the dock, they will be replacing it with new material, but essentially replacing the same dock.
Same exact dock.
Kind of like the Tin Man, you know.
Correct.
Get a new hand, then you get a new arm, you get your leg, pretty soon you got a new dock.
Same dock, same length, same width, same configuration, yep.
So, it's going to be removed as part of the process and is it required that they have to put the exact, like, let's say one of these docks, they've got a loose board and they decide to replace that board?
That's repair.
That's repair.
51% removal is review under your jurisdiction.
Oh, you got to come back.
So, if they repaired it, then that would be a different story, that'd be a code enforcement. But it's replacement, that's where it comes back to you.
Do the pilings count?
51%.
Square footage or how?
By weight?
Weight, volume.
Do the pilings count as 50 and the docks count as 50?
The pilings will be existing pilings.
Existing pilings, correct.
All right, well, it's more than 51%.
Okay.
And so, I would suggest that we treat this as it is right now rather than having to go back through this process and look at that one individually and then it excerpts that new application. Docks are tricky in this town, they always are, as you saw earlier in the evening.
Yes, okay.
So, this is, this will approve the dredging?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we'll, we'll handle it separately.
And all the other contracting and permits and everything you've got to do on the back end of that. So, with that, I'm going to open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public here who would like to comment on this application?
Anyone?
How about on Zoom, do we have any hands raised?
No hands raised.
I'm going to close the public hearing, I'm going to put it to the board, what do you think?
Motion to.
That the applicant, to approve?
To approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and to clarify, that's for all four projects, correct?
All four projects.
Wonderful.
We can go one by one if you want, each by each.
No.
Nope. We've been here long enough.
But you learned a lot about golf courses and revetments.
There will be four of those separate findings of fact, correct?
Four separate findings of fact and we will speed read them, they will be read next meeting, the 2nd of July. We've got a lot of findings of fact.
And do we need plans, the signature blocks rolled, not folded?
I believe we have plans, so we should be good there.
Who is the case manager of these, is it Ed?
It might have been, I think it was Ed, I think it was Ed.
Okay.
He's going to have a busy couple of weeks, got a lot of writing to do.
Ed's already a busy guy.
Well, he's actually cut and paste, just changed the address.
Yeah, this is a plug and check.
That's true.
Map location, all that, all right.
Thank you guys.
Thank you everyone, thank you all. Uh, we've got, is there any other business, any finding facts we got? Nothing? Once again, there are openings on the Kennebunkport Planning Board, we are, we are bumping up against quorum here.
It may become a requirement of an approval of next.
It might be, you have to at least submit a name, but all of, all of you know someone in town who would like to volunteer and do something and it's two Wednesdays, it's less than National Guard, it's two Wednesdays a month, you get to know about everything that's happening before it happens, like covered revetments, we don't have a term for this yet and it's very exciting and we have a lot of fun, don't we?
Yes.
All right.
We're going to have that with a term.
Okay, yeah, you have patented this, I need trademark on this, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I guess there's one motion to be made.
There is, wants to make it.
I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting.
Want to adjourn, okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye, all right, thank you all, thank you. Aye, all right, thank you all, thank you.